I'd like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education. I'd like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while we're standing in honor of those lost and their families nine years ago on the anniversary of Sandy Hook incident, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence briefly. Thank you. So we're going to start out with our school community session, public participation. And Emily will read a brief introductory piece.
Thank you. The board welcomes public comment at our meetings. This is for the folks in person and anyone joining us online. We do ask that when you speak, you state your name and your address. Comments are limited to three minutes in order to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Vivian, notice when you have 30 seconds left with the yellow. And then again with the red when your time is up. For people on Zoom, I will just let you know by speaking. We're happy to hear from our community, but at a business meeting like tonight, it should not be expected that the board or administration will respond. Public comment period is not a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow up. And if you are joining us tonight via Zoom, would you ask that you raise your hand and you will be called upon? Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak, starting in person?
My name's Mary Gass from Seven Langshire Drive in Madison. I just want to start off, I'm sure you all got my email yesterday. I've been in contact with Craig yesterday, too. I'm having a very hard time wrapping my head around the policy between vaccinated and unvaccinated students. It's not making any sense to me in regards to the fact that the vaccinated students can still carry and spread the virus. And they're given the option to stay in school and the unvaccinated students are not given that option. If these masks are doing what we're all hoping they're doing and keeping the spread down, I feel as though any child that is asymptomatic and healthy has the right to their education in school. I do understand you were saying that the screen and stay is a problem in the sense that we don't have enough staffing because certain classes are not able to be attended if you've been in close contact. And we're in Madison, we pay good money to live in this town and get the education that we expect. That shouldn't be the excuse. We should be figuring out resources to keep these kids in school. On top of that, you are stigmatizing these children. You are telling private medical information immediately by having kids at home in their class. And you're telling everybody who's vaccinated, who is not. And these kids have been through so much these past two years. My child's only in kindergarten, so I have not gone through it that much. But I have seen what it's doing to other children. And now you're putting another layer on top of their stress. And every day on the news, they're talking about mental health issues. And now we're dividing the children into categories and it's just not fair. And tonight on the news, there was the CEO, hold on one second, of the UMass Memorial Healthcare President and CEO is shocked right now by his hospitals because they are the highest vaccinated state. And yet their surge is just as bad as it was a year ago. So we keep treating as though the vaccinated are so safe and the unvaccinated are not. And it's just not the case anymore. I think everybody probably on the board knows somebody that's vaccinated that has carried COVID-19. I know my brother had it. He had it pretty bad and he's fully vaccinated. And there's so many other people are. So why are we having a policy in place that's taking kids out of the classroom for no reason at all? I really hope that you guys stand up and fight for these children and stop having policies in place that just don't make sense. I'm getting very frustrated also that I still don't get responses. I got one response last night to go to Craig. I had already gone to Craig. And that's it. I don't get a follow up. I don't get anything. I still don't even get answers. I want to know why we're doing this and separating these children when the vaccinated are still able to carry and spread this disease. I don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't remember. Do we get another chance versus the only?
There's another chance, but it's supposed to be tied to material that's covered between now and then.
There's a later public comment session, but it's related. So if you have something to say, you're most welcome. Now, if you like, or if anyone else likes to look into that.
My name is Daniel Milano. I live at 111 Squires Lane. I actually wasn't even aware of some of the policies that were just brought up. And I'm a little shocked and I don't know how accurate what you're saying is, but this doesn't make any sense to me. Who's making these policies? All right, this is my first meeting, so I don't know how it goes. But are we going to discuss some of these things throughout the meeting or are we just going to stare at each other?
No, I don't get to.
When will be the option that we could maybe have a discussion?
So tonight is a business meeting where we can't respond directly to comments, but we can follow up with individual questions or concerns. You're always welcome to email the board, the superintendent. We do occasionally have community workshops that have more of a dialogue component, but that's not this evening.
Very good. So the information that we're pulling today, we should respond on our own through emails?
If you'd like to, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I apologize. Like I said, it's my first time.
Glad you're here.
I'm gonna go. All right. Natasha Mills, long time CEO, 100 Deepwood Drive here in Madison. I guess, you know, same, like differentiating between vaccinated children, non-vaccinated children. I'm just like extremely disappointed, right? Like we wouldn't differentiate between kids because of the color of their skin, would we? I hope not. I hope my kids wouldn't be stigmatized against because they're Hispanic. I hope that my children wouldn't be stigmatized against because of a religious preference or a sexual orientation. So why should that matter for a vaccination status? It should not. So what we're doing is just creating greater division among these children, right? This is insane to me that a school district would foster this type of behavior, right? So segregation among children, that's what we are fostering here initially. If we continue to, you know, oh, hey, you've been in close contact, so therefore, you know, well, Johnny, you're vaccinated, so you get to stay in school. And Suzie, you're not. So guess what? You have to go home. You got to learn from the computer. Now, all your friends know that you're not vaccinated, so they're going to go ahead and talk about that as well. Like, why, why is that okay? So to me, I've always been the kind of person who puts myself in the shoes of a person who might be marginalized against, maybe, or, you know, feeling left out, maybe a weaker link or a underdog, so to speak, right? And I guess I find myself in this case because if I want to make a personal choice for my family, that now puts me in this marginalized group of people, you know, that, you know, are unvaccinated. And so my children will be marginalized, okay? Based on their vaccination status. And I don't care what anyone says, it will happen. There will be bullying. There will be children who will be excluded because of this when it should not even come to light. These kids shouldn't even be worried about who is vaccinated or not, okay? In the words of my 11-year-old child, when people talk to her about vaccines and all this stuff, she's like, ew, this is gross. Why are we talking about this? And it is gross. You are harvesting a gross environment for these kids. Now, all they're worried about is who's vaccinated and who's not. And it is disgusting to me. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone, Wendy, online that may have a question or want to speak?
No, no one has their hands raised.
Okay. Anyone else? Going once. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'll just say, so I'm Kristen Dern, 160 Thorne Road. I've already pulled my children from the school district. So I still live in the town and I'm very concerned about the town. And I do want the option to send my children to hand. But right now I've absorbed all this tuition to just give them a better education. If I could give them a better life right now, we'd be moving out of the state of Connecticut. But right now we're here in Madison. So I think that you'll have a lot of people on the outside that are still very concerned and have made other decisions for their children. I think that should be taken into consideration as well, especially with the vaccines and all of that. And the children in town that are in the schools, private school, whatever, they're living different lives than what you're providing them in Madison.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a quick, quick follow up. So if a vaccinated kid, just real fast, can stay in school after a close contact and because of staffing issues, they're allowed to go to band, they're allowed to go to lunch, they're allowed to remove their mask, right? So close contact with a COVID-19 student and that student's allowed to remove their mask in school makes no sense either. Makes no sense. So that needs to be looked at because if a vaccinated kid was in close contact and staying in school, at no means should their mask be coming off if this is what's keeping everybody so safe, too. Because they've been in close contact and that's not happening either. So we're kind of being hypocritical with what we're doing.
Thank you.
I have to say something, actually. My name is Megan Shesme. I'm at 12 Northwood Road. I have three girls in the district. I have two at Ryerson. I have one at Brown. Completely off the vaccine topic, we had the absolute pleasure of going in and seeing my oldest daughter sing, play the recorder and do drums in music class, maybe, I don't know, two or three weeks ago. It was amazing, like the buzz in the Brown School was like nothing I've ever seen. I've never even stepped foot in that school and my daughter's in her second year there. Very different experience at Ryerson. We have not once been allowed in the school. Mystery readers for first grade are still Zoom. PPTs are still Zoom. I heard Jeffrey has holiday shows and they had Halloween parades that were, kids were allowed in. So a very different experience depending on where you live in the town, which is all, you know, somewhat unfair as these kids play sports and talk about what they're doing with their families. So just something to consider, maybe making something a little more streamlined along that. The other thing with the music, I mean, you had kids, by the way, a teacher who didn't have to wear a mask, assuming she's vaccinated, kids had to stand six feet apart and sing with masks on, play the recorder with a blue bag underneath to catch the spit for God forbid, something sprayed across the air. So, you know, the optics on that is pretty gross looking. If you have, you know, sending those videos across the country to families saying, look at this, finally, we get to go in, but here's my kid singing at the top of their lungs with masks on. And kids are, you know, six feet or more apart in smaller classes. Couple of things to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, unless there's anyone else online, which there appears not to be, that'll close our public participation portion for now. And again, we will have another opportunity later in the agenda for public participation in response to specific things we cover between now and then. Thank you all and thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts. So next we have the Board of Education Student Representative Report. And that's Isabel Bagel and Lucy Fitzinger. Are they online?
Yeah, I'm online. Isabel's actually at a band banquet right now in Woodwinds in Bradford, so she's enjoying that. So I'm just going to be here tonight. But since our last meeting, T1 has wrapped up really nicely with successful cumulative exams. That being said, we are full steam ahead with T2. Positive energy and a sense of normalcy continue to fill the halls of hand. One way we're channeling that energy is by putting on a school-wide spirit week sponsored by the Student Council. The themes were decided by the student body and our USA Crazy Hat Day, Formal and Pyjama Day. Pyjama Day is my personal favorite. But every day of the week leading up to our winter break, we will have a theme. And I'm very excited to see the participation from the student body. Our student section this year has done a really outstanding job organizing participation, fans promoting attendance at the fall sports games. And we hope to see this continue into the winter sports season, which just opened this week, actually, with a boys' away hockey game at Greenwich. And now that fans are allowed again to attend indoor games, it'd be greatly appreciated if you show your support by showing up to some of our excellent athletic games this winter. It's infinitely more exciting to play in front of a crowd and much more fun to be attending a match in person rather than watching through a screen. Sorry about that. And that being said, it would also be wonderful to get a strong attendance for our chorus performance this Monday, the 20th, and our jazz and choir ensemble bands on Tuesday, the 21st. Both performances take place at hand in the cafeteria at 7:30. Masks are required to attend. And I was strongly encouraged to experience a scene what these talented musicians had been working towards all year. Also at this point in the year is when seniors start to hear back from colleges. We hope that all of our seniors are able to go where they want, wherever that may be. And just to remind the mass and community to be supportive and respectful to our seniors during this stressful time. Finally, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Daniel Hand High School will be hosting the American Red Cross in a PTO-sponsored event with a blood drive this Friday, December 17th. Anyone over the age of 16 can donate blood with 16-year-olds just needing a parental or guardian sign consent form. And volunteers are always welcome. Sign up links to help with food and drink, staffing and donations are available in the Daniel Hand update emails. That's all I have for tonight. So I don't have any questions?
Thank you, Lucy. Any questions from the board?
I do. Do you have to sign up to donate blood? Like, is there a kind of slot that you need to show up for or you just show up during the time?
I believe you can just show up during the time and they'll take anyone.
Thank you.
Lucy, thank you so much. Thanks for joining, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. So we now move on to the superintendent's report. Take it away, Dr. Pope.
Yes, thank you. And so I do have a presentation portion. I will go up to the screen where we do the enrollment projections. And I will show the board, I'll go through my regular report first. The board has in front of them the school calendar for next year. We've had several changes to the calendar to make it ADA compliant. So you'll notice that colors are no longer utilized and we use a gray grain of dates. Also, we written key rather than any symbols. You know, in the past, we've used symbols to designate certain things throughout. But those aren't discernible when it's converted for citizens online. Also, just want to note that the calendar has 182 student days, 188 days for teachers. So six professional development days, three upfront and then three throughout the year. The first day for students is August 29th. Last day is tentative for June 12th. So it's a pretty standard calendar. We looked at several breaks throughout, made sure we had the holidays corrected and put it in appropriate spots. And you'll see, you know, some certain weeks are longer. So April, April break is an extra day because the Good Friday holiday is the Friday before the break. We do consult with Learn. Learn is a resk in the area and they provide a calendar for us that indicates a recommended, you know, calendar for school districts. And school districts try and maintain that same week for families, for sports or work between the districts, you know, in terms of the days that are off. Wanted to share in terms of this year's calendar, we are now able to confirm the graduation date. And so districts in Connecticut are able to set a graduation date even prior to knowing all of our snow days. The state legislator allowed that several years ago. As long as it's 180 days or later, we're able to do that. And so June 14th is our, is our date for graduation with a rain date of June 15th. It's tremendous for our families to be able to plan for graduation. We have family members obviously to come in from out of town to attend. And then also, they can use a date to start planning their activities and that's inside of talent to work with our students on that night. Wanted to share, it's true, all holiday seasons, but I've just been so impressed with the giving from our schools, our community, our families. In particular, I just want to highlight one that's new this year. So there was a toy drive. Faith Trevally moved to the town this past year and has done a Yale-Nevin Hospital toy drive in a previous town for a few years and had always set an ambitious goal to achieve. And so this year she set an ambitious goal of 3,000 toys. At least she had 2,000 a year prior. And had put a lot of information out there, worked with a radio station. And what's cooking at hosted her in front. And so there's great, great spot for traffic. She got and delivered today. Today was her day to deliver. I think the family's completely exhausted, but 5,215 toys to Yale-Nevin. In Connecticut. You know, when I went to the schools, I knew that they had already done so many things, but they just stepped up and our family stepped up. And I know several of them delivered big busloads of toys. I think our, you know, our students had fun participating in that. And then I wanted to mention as well, C I A C Athletics has gotten quite a bit of press. I will say, C I A C told us about a month ago that they intended for vaccinated students to not have to wear masks during contests, during, during games. They have changed that to the break. And I think the intention, I can't totally speak for them because they haven't shared that, is they'll see how that goes and depending on where we are rate wise. So on December 23rd, students in C I A C contests will not have to wear masks while they're in the game. So, you know, if you think about basketball on the bench, you know, warmups, things like that, they would wear a mask, but while they play in the game, they do not have to wear, wear a mask. Any student can of course choose to, to wear a mask, but that is the regulations until January 2nd. So there's only a few things that would happen at that point. I will say, certain sports like wrestling, there are no masks allowed. Looked at that for a safety reason. Last year we didn't have wrestling, so our team is excited to move back wrestling. But there is, I think they look at that. So they look at each sport individually and how that would work. Any questions on that piece or maybe you'd like me to cover more detail before we pull up the presentation?
Thank you. Just want to order the dates on calendar.
Okay, so. Please to present our enrollment projections as I shared with the board, we had looked at half the demographer who created this, this report for the board comeback. He had presented in March of last year and gave the board affirmation. So not too much, much later, he presented one for December. You'll, we'll see some changes throughout which are important to highlight. Also want to make clear that Mike Zubba, the demographer, who actually lives in Madison, has changed jobs. And so we followed him with this new company to SLAM. So you'll see a different organization on the two presentations when you compare them. In terms of how he performed for this year in his demography report, basically spot on within 10, 10 students. So, you know, demographic reporting is, well, it's, you know, accepted within Connecticut and accepted by the school construction grant organization in Hartford is in terms of a way to predict student enrollment. It is not a perfect science, obviously. Not much is, but this is something that, you know, has proved to be our best predictor of student enrollment in the future. And as, as is shown here, 0.4%. Mike was pretty spot on in terms of that. He's actually presenting tonight to South Windsor Public Schools. So he was able to join us, but worked very closely with Mike over this, this past year. In terms of one of the main drivers of enrollment in schools, obviously is going to be population. And so for the first time in 2020, since in 100 years, Madison saw a decrease in total population of our, of our town, he felt and also other experts that I've talked to that this is, you know, potentially just a brief dip, that this is really pre-pandemic. As you remember, the, the census was occurring as the pandemic was going on and they continued it on through there. And so it may not, it may not currently be the case, you know, as we, as we look at things today. We'd expect that in 10 years, it will either be at least as high as, as 2010 or higher. Another big component of the enrollment projection is births. And we spent a lot of time talking about this, this last time. And he marveled that it is really interesting that for three years in a row, he had 94 births here in Madison. They are very, very steady. He's never seen that before. It's, it's time doing this. But what is interesting is he's seen a jump in births in town since his enrollment projection. So we've added another year to the projection here. You'll see that line really starting to jump up to higher. So he's estimated 148 births by the end of this. This year, he's worked very closely with the, with the town in making that, that projection. But it's definitely a stark increase in terms of that. Why that's very important to note, I think, especially for Madison, is that as a school district, we are a town and school district that picks up students from birth to kindergarten. So those 94s, if you look at, at their trajectory, those typically turn into 150 kindergarten students. And so when we look at almost 150 births, there is a potential for those to turn into many more kindergarten enrolled students. So that's, that's exciting. That's held true in previous years. See, I'll just use this for that. But when we look at these years when we were at 188, it wasn't quite so much of a jump, but as it, as we went through those years, we've always seen a pretty significant jump into that. Finally, well, another predictor of enrollment is the number of home sales because oftentimes homes are sold to younger families that are moving into town, are starting a family. And, and that is a, is a big indicator. So when we saw the decreases in enrollment, we saw lower home sales in these years here versus prior years. And then also we're seeing that, you know, that increase come back. So we're seeing home sales come back to about 2004 levels from the two years of the pandemic. about two thousand four levels from the two years of the the pandemic. So I think that's consistent with what the board has experienced in their their lives living in in Madison, their time living in Madison and and what we were, we were seeing in enrollment and students coming in, families coming into to central office to to register. One thing we do point out, though, is when we look at a a medium, median home sale price of basically five hundred sixty thousand dollars, those are not typically starter homes. Those are, you know, pretty, pretty well priced homes in oftentimes that comes with older students. And so we are hoping that would be certainly much easier for our district to to handle increases in enrollment throughout our district and not just all at the state K to two level. In terms of of future developments, we are at a point as a town called a mature housing stock, that there are not many new developments going on and there's not much new land to develop. There's large plots of open land up up on the northern end of town that are are designated as open space and will not be not be built. And so, you know, we we are not experiencing much new construction. We do work very closely, and this is a similar list to what the board saw seven months ago, when we went went through the the previous presentation, that there is, you know, a few single family homes under construction, but you know, and now that a now that a high number, you know, about twenty five that are under construction right now that are not expected to bring a large number of of students. And again, our hope is that that would be spread out, you know, along along the grade levels. And it's often the case at at higher price points. In terms of enrollment projections, I've covered many of these. As you know, there's a a much larger PowerPoint deck that will be put on our website tomorrow. The previous one will be maintained as well. So if anyone wants to compare where we were in March and where we are now, that will be easy to do by looking at both PowerPoints. But you know, when a demographer does this this study, they start with the number of births, as I've mentioned, and historic enrollment project trends. So we we gave Mr. Zubba our enrollment and where that stood. And as you saw, he was he was spot on for for this year. Unemployment, which is not a not a major factor for for us in terms of where this this enrollment trend is going, housing developments, I've shared, home sales and permit activity, which we're all that was in the previous slide. They do look at, you know, several different averages, five year average, three year averages and weighted and blended to build the different types of scenarios. And as similar to last time, there's a a low, medium and high scenario that I'll share here that shows the projected enrollment. Persistence ratio is something of a pretty familiar with, and we have a a pretty interesting story here that's unique, I think, to a pandemic and as recovering from the from the pandemic. When when Mr. Zubba looked at this, he he said this was a little bit more exaggerated for for Madison than other other districts. So we experienced a net out out migration of two percent for the first time in recent history in Madison. And that was our families that chose to go private for for the pandemic. We had families choose to keep their child home, any homeschool, or five year olds that just stayed one more year at home prior to going to to kindergarten. And then we have seen that that rebound, especially at the at the elementary grades. And so you'll see for the for the first time, we had a negative two percent last year, and then we're at seven percent this year. So we've seen the persistency come come back with a with a larger kindergarten. You know, coming in than than expected, one point seven. That's a that's a pretty high number based on the burst that year. Again, I think that was a function of four year olds on that cusp staying home for for another year, which makes a lot of sense, and other families coming back throughout at the at the elementary level. In terms of projected births, this was the chart going forward. That's a that's a big piece, I think, for us in terms of our our kindergarten enrollment. So we, I asked them to you know, really take a take a strong look. It was important to to do that. I think one thing you will see here, we talked low, medium and high models, our media model, which is what we submit to the the state, is very close to the high model. So I think that tells us tells us two things. I think the medium model is 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 very likely, but the the ceiling hopefully in terms of enrollment is not much greater than what we're 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 predicting. So there's not a potential for a huge swing as some towns have seen, maybe a huge development start or condos be filled by by families. That's you know, what Mike is explaining in in South Windsor, I'm very familiar with that town. They had a lot of condos available. And so as families fill those condos and moving in potentially temporarily to Hartford, they saw huge swings in enrollment while they were building schools. Swings up in enrollment. And then the low model is still above where where we were just a couple of years ago. You know, as we've talked, the the board has seen this through through previous presentations, we've kind of hit that that bottom. You know, in terms of a a whole district, so two thousand four hundred and forty, and then we're predicted to to rebound from there of all three, three models. We're starting to see that slow increase on, you know, the positive area as we have have stabilized and start to see that come back. Not approaching within the the timeframe, though, you know, the the numbers that we saw in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Overall projection is two thousand four hundred and twenty students for the first five years and two thousand six hundred for the last five, five years in the in the rise. And again, the the numbers are staggering. They're not large increases, but what is being predicted is is larger increases at the elementary level. We're we're getting to school by school, but that's where I think we want to pay a lot of attention to is our elementary enrollment. Whereas our our middle school and high school certainly have capacity to handle more students that are currently in those in those developments. So here is the enrollment model in, you know, kind of a a nutshell in terms of what we expect to to see. And as the as board members will most likely remember, what we are able to do in terms of new school construction is eight years out. So we we have to be tied to eight years out, although we gave a a ten year projection here. So when we look at that's this 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 line right here, a full full district enrollment of two thousand six hundred and three with with pre K, two thousand five hundred fifty eight without. And so again, not a huge swing from our our previous enrollment. When you look at elementary, though, we're seeing some pretty good class sizes here returning to two hundred. You know, third and fourth grade and and up, because as we've we've seen, so you know, our current year, we're graduating two thirty three. And at the high school, we can see one ninety one go up. That's the first class that they've seen. As as, you know, as far as we can, we can remember, it's under two hundred. So that's a pretty significant swing. Not too long ago, we were graduating three hundred at the at the high school level. But we start to see the two hundreds come back and into, you know, well into the to the two hundreds as well as you know, we would expect preschool to to increase over the over the years. One thing we we submit to the statistics, enrollment projections based on our current in enrollment. And so current school design. So as you, as the boards are aware, K through three, we have two, two buildings. This is the 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 trajectory trajectory for for that. What I see when I I look at this is that I think we're we're looking at a situation where doing nothing. Staying with our current design is not an option. So operating Ryerson and Jeffrey as K to three buildings would not be an option, you know, for for many more years. As the boards are aware, Ryerson is really bursting at the seams. Jeffrey does not have a whole lot of space, and that's with portable stash to to the building. And so we would have to make a change, you know, regardless. Could we send higher, you know, Grayson to Brown? We certainly could. That certainly would be something we would be looking at if we we got into that that scenario. But I think it's important for the community to to know and understand that that, you know, just staying in our current grade configuration is 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 not an option for us in the in the long term. Because when we start to see those seven hundreds between the two buildings, that would be you know, very difficult to to handle. Show another another way in 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 terms of the historic and for for two years and then and then projected, you'll you'll see. So as I, as I mentioned, Ryerson is is very full at that at two eighty eighty seven. You know, just a few years down the road, it'd be at 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 three thirty, three forty. And so those are the timeframes that we'd really be, you know, in a in a difficult spot. This is with the positive referendum, this would be the last year that we would, you know, be in that current configuration. And we 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 do believe we'd be able to handle that, certainly with some some potential crowding at 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 Jeffrey. But beyond that, it takes another another jump in. That would be, that would be difficult. So be really fixed with the the decision to make it that that. So when we look at at Brown School, it takes a little bit longer to recover. This is consistent with the previous enrollment projections that, you know, we worked too long ago, that four, four, four five in Madison was five hundred seventy five. You know, right now, we're at three thirty eight, but it it does continue to to increase over time and would also add to you know, some credit concerns if we do not have a positive referendum that will help us address that. Coulson. So our, you know, building we are, we are now, as with all the, as we go up in the higher grades, you'll see a similar story for for Anne High School. It takes a little bit longer to to come up, very slow increases for for a while, but then we start to see those classes of two hundred get to it's a middle school and we'd be over six hundred again as a as a little school. Daniel Land High School, eight seventy five, predicted to to go down again next year, and it starts to come back. And then you see that's a big reason why we're we're hoping as we see families move into the new homes or or old houses selling that they're they're bringing bringing students of high grade levels, not just at at the lower grade levels as we see them move into town. And then finally, in terms of the the projection and where we look at as a as a as a building, as a new art construction or or project, we are above where we were predicted of. Looks here, when we were looking at this in March, the twelve thirty six, which is what we would be looking at between Brown and the new elementary school, that was supposed to be one thousand one hundred fifteen. And so we are above that. Brown was going to be five fourteen, so a a pretty significant increase. This is projected ahead for eight years out. And our new building is going to be six oh one. So we're built out of a six hundred and one student building. It's fortunate to get this information now. You know, we have a amount of money set aside for the the project. We are able to still make some changes with it. So we've already asked, asked Colliers and how that would this would potentially impact. We'd share this, we've information with the state. So this is really the first time the information's getting out tonight. Wanted to share that with the board, but we would share this information with the with the state, and we would be able to add additional classrooms by looking at the entire entire project. And so as you know, we have contingencies in certain areas. It's very common that the contingencies, you know, sometimes have some additional funding, whether it's you know, raining water into the building, whether it's how much certain things would cost or or the bidders of the on the entire project. It's not uncommon to save some money throughout that process. And the one new classroom is about three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And so when you think of that, that price tag in a sixteen million dollar project, there is the potential, you know, my hope to to find some additional classroom spaces. The other strategy that's often time used, and again, that's what South Windsor has done throughout, is we have some smaller spaces in the new building. You could look at the specs and go through that. We have some smaller spaces that are anticipated in that building. You may take those and combine, put them together. So two special ed workstations would be together. They could be used as a as a classroom if need be. There's some options there. Another example of a potential space that could be utilized is a a steam room. Science, technology, engineering, arts and math. The steam setup, you know, is is an area that we have designated a a classroom space for, and that would be potentially, if we had to, and that would be a last resort, but we could utilize that as a space and then look to do stem or steam within within different spaces throughout, you know, we use. Not all classrooms are used at the same time, so we have some options to to do that. But we we really do want to look at the those those spaces, you know, flexibly as we as we go forward. The other area this helps us out quite a bit on too is we look at Brown School. And so we've always, as we've looked at the redesign and where kindergarten and first grade are going, we want to make sure we maximize classrooms. We've always looked at that. There is some opportunity there as as the boards are aware, Brown School itself is is larger than the the new school that's projected to be built, but there are some spaces within Brown that are are different. So an auditorium, a larger gym, things like that, that wouldn't be able to be used for for classrooms. It will have less classrooms than the the new building, most likely. But we could look at you know, potential spaces that are that are within to make a classroom. So we have a very large library, we have library offices, more suited for, say, a middle school than an elementary school. That might be a spot for additional classroom. Things like that. So we're working with with Colliers and D R A, an architect, to to look at that. I have the slideshow ready. I also have the previous projections. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer. And as I shared, if I can't answer, I will get them to Mr. Zubba or Colliers to answer for you.
That is a super quick question. My mind's not working that good this late. You said three hundred thousand for a classroom?
So, yeah, I can't can't necessarily take questions from the audience at this point, but I will just share adding to a a existing building project. So as you're taking a a building project that is building three hundred classroom, thirty thirty classrooms with, you know, a gym and you know, cafeteria to add another classroom at the end of the building, you know, that would be about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand additional dollars. Yes.
So based on, you know, how things go at the referendum, would we be addressing projections of final time? Like, I know right now, there's two three lot subdivisions that are pending action for January, so they wouldn't have been included in these projections. One is a three lot subdivision on Wildwood, and the other's a three lot subdivision on Summer Hill. So would we do one final look just to make sure that we had everything
Yes.
accounted for?
Yeah, I have a lot of confidence in the projections. I think as we showed, the previous ones were spot on. These are very solid. We're in a, we're in a time where things are changing pretty quickly. And I I think that will it will be very smart for us to do another one. This is a full demography report. We receive Nezdek's report as well yearly as part of our contract with Nezdek, very similar projections. You know, that so, but yes, I would, I would want to see that as well. And probably when we look at say next April or May, when we're really, you know, digging into the specs and working with a architectural firm to design the building.
Okay.
Be forward to have that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as I shared, we'll put this on the website. And so we'll share it with some citizens that have had some questions before. It's good information presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is board member comments. And I will just start by saying I share Dr. Cook's enthusiasm and excitement about all our schools that had fundraisers this holiday season and toy drives. They were incredibly successful and we give thanks to all of our building administrators and all of our faculty and staff and students and their families who contributed so unselfishly of themselves during this holiday season. Thank you. Great job. Something to be proud of. And then also just an update on the school renewal plan. The Board of Selectmen moved forward to the Board of Finance, the school renewal plan in the form that we presented it to them and then we voted on it. The Board of Finance will be voting on Wednesday evening, a couple nights, I'm sorry, tomorrow night. And again, we're, if that passes, we're hoping to stay on track with an expended, an expected referendum date of February 15th. So we, please be prepared for that. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay. Thank you. Audience response to information presented. Sir, did you have any other additional comments based on what you just saw?
Yes, my, my original thought of coming here today, I'm concerned about the health aspects of my children wearing the mask. On the other woman that brought, you know, some, some thoughts, and I wasn't aware of those things. My concern is, is just the mental health aspect of this. And I, you know, again, I don't know if you're able to respond to me. It seems like you can't. But my concern is what is the long-term effects and what are the benefits? And possibly that the benefits are outweighed by the risks of what we're imposing on our children. That's, that's a big concern of mine. I'm a psychiatric nurse and I'm seeing a trend just within 12 months. This is, is having a severe effect on society. And I'm seeing it with my children, obviously it comes of concern because I see my children and I feel like there, things are going on that are hurting them. And, you know, and I kind of get what some of the other people are saying, maybe we're on the same lines. Maybe not, but I feel as though we're handcuffed as parents. Another thing that came out of my mind, I'm not allowed to meet with my children. I have three children. I'm not allowed to meet with their parents because of these restrictions and safety. But I'm allowed to come here today to this school and meet with you. So it doesn't, it seems kind of strange. And maybe I just need things to be explained to me in, in a way I can understand possibly. Maybe, maybe that's another concern. But I think it might make sense to maybe bring some community members together and maybe discuss some of these things. So we have possibly even, maybe we could have some professionals that work in, in healthcare to look at what the benefits and the risks are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know if Scott is with us online, Wendy?
Wendy said no.
Board of Selectmen?
No, he's not.
Okay, so we will dispense with that and move on to item number eight. The consent agenda. There are a couple line item transfers and there were some budget expenditures listed as of December 10th. I need a motion to pass the consent agenda. Emily, seconded by Diane. Thank you. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye, raise your hand, aye? Names? None? Any extensions? Nope. Yes, unanimously. And now we move on to board committees and liaison committees. And we will start with the curriculum and student development committee. Steve?
And we have no report today. We haven't met. Our next meeting is on January 4th. Thank you.
Next is facilities committee, Emily.
Yes, we did a report. We met on December 7th. And we primarily spoke first about the work to Polson and Brown entryways updates. Bill McMen gave us a PowerPoint presentation overview of the projects. The focus for these is on any compliance and security enhancements with additional improvements to make the space more user friendly and more filling, as Bill mentioned earlier. We could have committee members ask about the main entrances, security and safety enhancements that was a question that came up. In particular at Brown, there'll be improvements to the vestibule area. The courtyard space will be enhanced along with what are those things called?
Bolards.
So that, you know, cars can't come in, dollars along the roadway on the sidewalk. The Polson courtyard right on here, you can see on your way out, will be enhanced. They're going to remove that raised planter area. So there'll be a lot more space for seating and for socializing, also some outdoor learning potentially. Some changes to the main office area here at Polson as well, allowing for increased access, increased security and buzz in access. Bill's looking into adding on the original enhancements if funding permits to update carpets, lighting, wall treatments in this hallway. Helped the plans out to bid and will keep us posted. And basically the goal for timing is to get bids this month on entry projects and make recommendations for contracts early next month, next year. With the goal for construction over the summer while the students are away. He recognized that's a tight timeframe, but we'll be along as quickly as possible. And then he also just gave a brief update on the facilities. The carports are up and running, the monitors are up and holding at hand showing that usage and the impact from the solar carports. There's also good lighting under the carports at night, which people appreciate. He gives an update on the high school rooftop unit seven that had malfunctioned. The parts are in, it will be a significant repair. They'll be using a crane to do the work over the winter break. As we've heard before, some of the other rooftop units have failed in the past. So Bill is working on a plan to sort of short-term and long-term, see if this is something that we can mitigate. He also gave us an update that they're doing radon testing in the classrooms this month. This is a requirement to do 10% of the classrooms every five years. They just have those little boxes in the classrooms. And finally, he is doing some preliminary research into energy savings that we could maybe anticipate over the summer with AC with these like giant battery units that they have in the parking lot. He's just sort of getting ahead of it to see what opportunities are, so he was posted. There was no public comment. Our next meeting is also January 4th. And I did just, that's the end of our committee report, but I did want to mention too that we did, speaking about facilities, tour several of the buildings with new board members and Mr. McMen and Dr. Cook. And we, Freddie Ryerson, Jeffrey, Polson and Brown. And I, I found it very enlightening personally. I think it was really good to get into the schools. Some of us had been in the schools much or if at all. And it was really valuable to see, like when you talked about Dr. Cook, like imagining more kids in Ryerson is, is a lot, it seems almost impossible. They're doing an awesome job working with the space they have, but I found it to be very enlightening. And also it was nice to see more Brown and think about where, you know, that the kindergarten wing would be or the first graders and feel how that would be for the kids. So I thought that was a great opportunity for, for us. And I appreciate Bill and Dr. Cook taking that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Emily. Finance committee, Gaylord.
Yep, thank you, Seth. The finance committee met today earlier at 5:30. The administration met for a budget retreat and came up with a proposed budget of $60,290,000. Give you the bottom line numbers, a headline. This is a 1.72% increase over last year. 1.32% of that is contractual. I'd like to note also that this is in keeping with a five-year average of annual 1.7% increases, which is lower than the state average. I've distributed a four-page document to all of you, which I think will also be posted online, I believe, containing summaries, supporting details and an explanation of the SR2 and American Recovery Plan grants. I'll provide a few highlights from these documents. The biggest driver, of course, are our salaries. And this is projected to go up $780,000. That's a 3.24% contractual increase. We have some health insurance. It's been kept in check for many years. This year though, it's projected to go up 4.13%. Land and cycle maintenance is also up about $50,000. This is targeted mostly towards improvements at Polson. Utilities and transport are rising at a modest rate of 2%. Fuel is scheduled to go up about 15%. That's represents $20,000. And the good news, our debt service is declining by about 23%. This is, as the school bonds roll off the books. There were some reductions in force, early retirements and fewer repairs. All of this equated to about a $300,000 projected savings. Of note, we are restarting or reviving the frozen curriculum writing cycle. So Gail, superintendent, went through those details. This is partly in response to the ASK accreditation standards. We're going to be restarting the music P, the curriculum writing cycles. We're, the administration proposing a little bit more money for AP advanced placement and also for a math coach. Dr. Cook reviewed the SR2 and ARP grants. Pleased to say that our actual expenses closely tracked last year's budget projections. We will not continue the Jefferson, Ryerson, Jeffrey, Ryerson teachers as planned. The other categories are in the detailed part of the sheet. Now I'll just read them quickly. There's, there was money budgeted, budgeted for substitutes. We made a one-time purchase of interactive boards. And we put some of that money towards the SS of Polson, student wellbeing. I'd like to thank the administration, all the department heads, Dr. Cook, Assistant Superintendent Gail, Dylan Hench, Stacy Novitz, Heather Dobson, Bill McMen, Liz Pataglia for the numbers they submitted. And looking ahead, we have our first budget workshop scheduled for January 4th, where we'll discuss these numbers in the context of our budget guidelines. And then a second meeting on January 11th. And, sorry, any other significant dates? Hope to take action on the budget by January 18th, if necessary. The referendum is on, for the budget referendum, the town referendum is, is May 6th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Gaylord. Personnel committee, Marie.
You don't have a big end of that.
Thank you. Policy committee, Diane.
Yes, we met this evening and we had a huge discussion. So we started by discussing the 9,000 series bylaws. And one of the, the reason we started with it is because we looked at our, our calendar of how we plan to review our, our policies. And several chairs prior to me, we set up a proposed calendar to get through everything. And we're supposed to be in a 5,000 series right now and we're still on 3,000. So we're trying to play catch up. So we figured we would try to move things along as quickly as possible for policies that have been outdated or for other reasons need to be rescinded. Most of the time it's because there's already state mandates or, what's the word I'm looking for? Thank you, statute that, that make the policy not needed. So the problem right now is that in order to change a policy, revise it or rescind it, we need three readings according to our current bylaw. After the policy committee meets and discusses it, when we refer it to the Board of Ed for discussion and possible action, first you have to wait 48 hours after it leaves the policy committee. And then it needs three reads by the Board of Ed. So one of the things that we would like to do in the 9,600 series is to change it so that we only need two reads instead of three and to get rid of the 48-hour requirement. So we're going to revise the law with Shipman and Goodwin and bring it forward to the next policy committee and, and hopefully vote on it to put it on the agenda for the next Board of Ed meeting so that we can have our first read and discussion. So until then, we still are required to have 48 hours after it comes out of committee and the three reads. So the only way around that is in our current policy regarding policy number 9,600.1. We can take a policy and decide by a two-thirds vote at the Board of Ed meeting to move it forward to the, pass the discussion phase and move it directly to the adoption phase, as long as we have a two-thirds vote. So our committee decided that we have a whole set of series of policies in the 3,000 series and the 4,000 series that need to be rescinded because they're out of date, they are already covered by statute or other laws. And so there's no need for them. So we voted tonight to move these forward to the Board of Ed for the next meeting. It should be on the agenda, so you'll get a huge packet of policies. But I promise it's not bad because they're all, we've moved to ask the Board of Ed to consider repealing them and to do it expeditiously by waiving the discussion phase and moving it to the adoption phase. So that would be the series 3,000 policies, 320.2, 3150, 3250, 3526, 3541.1 and 3541.2 for the 3,000 series. And in the 4,000 series, it would be, there's like 10 policies I won't read. We also discussed policy 1361, visitors to schools. That is a revision. And so we are going to also move it forward and put it to the next Board of Ed meeting. And that's just a, a change of where visitors sign in. And then also policy 5110.4, student discipline. And then we also discussed policy 9450 about removing the communications committee. And so all of those will come in your packet at your next Board of Ed meeting so that we can discuss and hopefully have action on. And that is the end of my talk.
Thank you. It occurs to me, I forgot to offer the board an opportunity to ask any of the chairs that gave reports, questions about the reports. So if anyone has any questions for any of the chairs that already spoke, please feel free now and then I'll try to remember to offer that on a per line item basis going forward. Questions on?
Diane, help me understand how these policies get vetted. Is that exclusively the members of the committee or?
So we actually tasked Shipman and Goodwin to go through our policies and to review them to make sure that they're not, well, they are updated. But in our, in our, our own policies, we're supposed to review our policies. And so we've asked them to go through it and they're going through it by series. So like we're doing the 3,000 series and the 4,000 series and they review them. And anything that is, you know, covered by state statute or is covered, say, under, you know, our contract with the employees, then those things don't need a separate policy. And so then they recommend to us, we recommend that you rescind this policy. And that's how we, we do it. So then we look at the bunch that they go through and we decide which ones we want to just rescind or which ones that we decide maybe we want to change it, revise it and bring it back to the board for, to be a revised policy.
Thank you.
And also there's, there's policy that, under our bylaws, there is a procedure for any board member to bring to the policy committee a request to add a policy, for example, or to change a policy or, you know, amend or, or rescind. So just keep that in mind if anybody ever has.
There are a lot of policies.
Yes, there are.
We're going to be reading them all. The other thing is because right now, you know, until we, until we revise the, the series of the 9,000 about how we adopt or revise policies, we have to stick with the three readings. And so looking ahead with policy meeting once a month and the Board of Ed general meetings meeting twice a month. and the Board of Ed general meetings meeting twice a month, in order to get those three readings in and have action on any particular item, it takes a good month and a half. You know, if not longer, depending on vacations, et cetera. So we only really have like maybe three policy meetings left to kind of finish our work for the year, because it has to go through those three readings.
Any other questions from the reports already given? All right, thank you. Next is Learning.
Yeah, so we met on Thursday night. It was very interesting. People were very, very nice there. Anyway, the first, the beginning, it's only a two-hour meeting, so the first 45 minutes to about an hour was a presentation from old line Superintendent Ian Nebiasser, which was very, it was really good to see another viewpoint from a different school. He's a regional school with 1,300 students and 365 staff. Interestingly, never closed for COVID, and they had no major issues. This school also allows students from other towns to come to school and pay tuition per month, which I thought was, was really good. He just recently, for $44 million, I guess, renovated the four schools that, that they had. That was his, most of his presentation. The next thing that was discussed, which was part of what he talked about, was February vacation. And the districts that were there said, you know, and it's been brought up medically, that if you could have a whole week to be off at different times to the air, kind of mitigates any viruses and anything. So, and, and we also talked about getting all the school districts to kind of have the same calendar, which is very difficult, but you know, something that was definitely discussed and talked about. Also talked about, which I thought was ECHMC insurance, and I don't know if anyone is, is aware of that. That's an insurance that has saved 14% to 20% in health benefit expenses. I believe you said there were five to seven, I don't know. There were five to seven school districts right now in that particular region that are doing this, and that's really saving them a lot of money. And I thought that was, that was interesting. We also had a discussion about the benefits of regional schools, magnet schools, budget increases and expenditures that will occur for those moving forward. And I have that information if anyone wants to see that. Another very interesting thing that we talked about was the TDP, I guess, a teacher diversity program. And there are districts right now that are in that positive, and they have a very positive out, outcome with this program. And that allows, you know, a teacher to be, have a mentor, this person has a bachelor's and moves on to become a teacher. And I thought that was, that was very good. They also talked about Connecticut Oil Purchasing Consortium, where their business officers there completed a rollout program that will be available to all districts, municipalities at a reduced price for their oil. And I think the last thing we talked about was a fingerprint scanner that will be coming, forthcoming from the state, so that the police, police departments won't have to fingerprint people anymore. You won't have to make appointment. They'll just have a scanner available. They're not exactly sure where the scanner will be, but will be, you know, local. And then, of course, we started to talk about mental health needs of students, and we're going to continue that at the, at our next meeting, which will be in a month.
Thank you. Any questions for Gary?
One question, you said, they said their schools never closed for COVID. Do you mean that they went straight from in-person to hybrid or to remote learning?
No, they had no, no, they stayed in school, in class.
Not, not in the pandemic, though, surely.
So I'm familiar with, you know, Mr. Professor, Dr. Professor, I think it is, and what old line, line had done, because they had a little bit more space in their buildings at, at the time. I think they fully opened in September, whereas we opened in October. Yes, they did close in, in March, all districts.
Okay, that's, that's a good.
Yeah, 2020 school year, they, they opened.
Okay, they were all in.
Nice job on that, yeah.
Thank you. There's nobody anywhere from March to. Right, right, that's, I forgot about those.
All right, so moving on from the committee reports. Thank you all for those excellent reports. You're all doing a great job with, with your reports so far. That's great. It's really informative to the public too, so. Action item 11, motion, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 30th, 2021 Board of Ed meeting, so, second.
You just gotta beat me on that.
All right, all in favor, any discussion on the minutes? They recommended it. All right, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye, aye. Any names, any extensions? Ayo, Michelle Carries? Next item up for bid. I need a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school year calendar that was presented by Dr. Cook. Diane, second? Oh, you know what? This doesn't need a second because it came out of committee. I'm sorry. So Jen, you can, you can second the next one.
Okay, I'll save it.
All right, any discussion on the school year calendar?
What came out?
It's when the school year calendar went through.
No, that was my reporter.
Oh, Jen, you. But usually it comes to a committee first. Okay, all right, then I will take Jen's second on that. Second, Jen, look at that, you're back on.
I'm back in action.
All right, so the 2022, 2023 school year calendar, any discussion?
I do, I just, I, I think, I don't know if it was noted earlier, this format being a little bit different for, could you just speak to that really quick about, was that for ADA compliance?
Absolutely, yes. So our website needs to be ADA compliant, and so when things are downloaded for, for somebody who might be visually impaired, colorblind, we have to make sure that it converts well, and so our, our staff at, that, I noticed over the years and previously, you know, done some work around that, but you can only use the one color, so being in gray and shaded, you really have to rely on the key, which can be converted. We also use symbols when it happens, so we just use. I think those are also difficult to, to convert, I think, for individually appear structure.
I, I find it, I like a little bit. I think it's much cleaner. I like it a lot. I think it's more user-friendly.
It used to look like a bunch of nautical signals.
I thought I found it easy to reference. You could just look, glance, I knew like five of them, so. Different schools have to remember those. I think that's great.
So unless there is any more discussion on our on our compliant new school year calendar.
Is the graduation date going to be added to the calendar or no?
So we have, we typically would not add that till in, in the beginning of the school year. So with the new, new law, we can actually do it, we could do it as early as September of, of next school year. But, yeah, we'd probably look at the 12th or, or the 9th, because we've been back to this.
All right, so.
TJ, you have to, I'm sorry, Mrs. Salatieri has to look at the bill.
It's not like solidify yet.
So why don't we do this? Yeah, you know, you'll follow up and solidify it, and you'll get the final day on as soon as feasible, right? And in the meantime, we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on this the way it is, and when it's updated, it'll be updated on our calendar.
Right, but the, the 2023 graduation date, which I understand why Diane would be interested in, would not be available, wouldn't be, not till September of 2022. The one change we will make on this is the dates will be in order for open house.
Sorry, yeah, that was, that was actually raised at earlier, and we're gonna, so, okay, what we're voting on now is a proposed amended school year calendar. The only amendment at this point will be to change up the order a little bit of the way that the school open houses are presented on the calendar in the key. So it's just the order of then will be switched, that's all. Each school will still have its respective open house on the date originally scheduled, but we just have to switch the order on the, on the key. All right, any further discussion? Just a motion. So all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any extensions? Michelle Carries, nothing. Next action item is to approve a donation in the amount of $1,726 from the Jeffrey PTO to the Jeffrey School to purchase typing club for grade three team and flashlights for flashlight reading. By our bylaws, we have to accept as a board any donations. This is, as always, Jeffrey PTO has been generous here in donating $1,726 for programming at Jeffrey. Any, this, well, a motion, I need a motion. All right, any discussion on the?
Well, I just wanted to know when to type, purchase typing.
I think what they're gonna do is run the club after school.
Keyboarding.
So, okay, so all in favor of accepting a generous donation, raise your hand, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, nothing.
Thank you to the Jeffrey PTO.
All right, future agenda items. Anybody have any recommendations for future agenda items? Hearing none. Item 15, meetings and dates of importance are listed in your board packet, such as upcoming board dates, and again, I would remind everyone in the public that it appears we will be headed toward a referendum on the school renewal plan on February 15th. So kiss your sweetheart on the 14th and then go out and vote the next day. Motion to adjourn. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed?